I do apologize for us getting back from our executive session a little late, but could I please get a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mrs. Berry, I do apologize. I know that we're giving you less time than was scheduled and planned for, but tonight we're going to be having a presentation on potential bond options and a report from the Bond Committee. Mrs. Berry.
Hey. Madam President, members of the board. Actually, I think I'm gonna pull this. Sorry about that. Can you hear me? Sorry. All right. Well, Madam President, members of the board, good evening. So tonight, we're going to talk about the bond, the 2024 bond options that we have been in discussion, as you know, in a couple of planning sessions with you, but we wanted to talk a little bit about it, make sure that we have the ability to talk to the, or at least so the public can hear. One of the study sessions, we've had two planning sessions which the public was open to also, but just wanted to make sure that we have information out there because on June 12th, we will be bringing back an item for you to potentially be calling for a bond election. So, we wanted to go through a few things with you. First, we wanted to discuss the why we need a bond, review the timeline, talk about some of the bond line items that are in the overall bond options, and then talk a little bit about the tax rates because that is also something that's important. And again, then you'll be able to take this information over the next month, look at it. If there's any additional questions you have, you're welcome to see myself or Mr. Narducci or any of our staff, Tom Dunn or Colleen Flannery, who help us, obviously, in the support service and the technology areas, too. We also have Michelle Mallory and John Anguignano with us tonight. They are from our Bond Committee Advisory Committee. They are going to speak just to you for just a minute on the committee's recommendation. I'm gonna talk and then I'm gonna turn it over to them. So, a couple of things. We just want to make sure, there's three things that are really important about this upcoming bond. We want to make sure that we are taking care of our preventative maintenance. As you know, we have 5.5 million square feet. We have over 200 buses. We have a vast technology infrastructure, so we want to make sure that we're maintaining that. We also want to make sure that we're modernizing, just like you would with a home or a business that you have, and then we want to make sure that we're maximizing our ability to be innovative and prepared for this future. So those three Ms. are really important. We want to maintain, modernize, and we want to maximize our ability to be prepared in the future. Couple of things about the timeline. We have been working on this bond for a couple of years now, but we did, at the beginning of this year, we did start by working with our Bond Committee and then obviously talking to the board and planning sessions with that. We met with our subcommittees, which were led by Colleen Flannery. She had a north and a south technology advisory committee, and then Tom Dunn, who had an advisory committee related to facilities. So both technology, facilities, and transportation were addressed in subcommittees. They met, came back afterwards to discuss and review our options, and then in May, the last, our third meeting that we had with the Bond Committee was on April 29th, and then that's where they came up with their final recommendation. Tonight, we're reviewing it, but really, there's no action item. The action item will be on June the 12th, where we will put an option in front of you to call for an election and give you the ability to select from options. If it does get called for an election and that is put on the voter pamphlet, in August, we'll do factual information presentations to our schools, at community events. The district can only do factual presentations. We can't be for or against, and so we'll start those factual presentations if we do call for an election. And then, of course, the bond election is in, on November, in November of 2024. A few things we put into the bond election. You'll see five line items. You'll have categories, when you look at the Excel document, of a lot of different areas, but really, it wraps up to five areas, and most of those are driven by statute. Transportation has to align a specific item in the bond because it's pupil transportation. We also have instructional. That's very different than non-instructional. Instructional is your actual school facility, so we have furniture, I mean, I'm sorry, instructional for the furniture and equipment piece, that's separate than land or construction. So that's why we outline it, and that's most of all your technology that's in your schools, your furniture and equipment, your desks, your chairs, all of those things, along with laptops, interactive flat panels, things like that, that are on the technology side. On the instructional side, also is the land, the new construction, the improvement in renovations. And again, that's majority of that is renovations. We do have, and we'll talk about that, is a rebuild for one of our oldest elementary schools, Hartford Elementary School, in this proposal. So we'd be constructing, tearing down or constructing, for example, a new school. But we have, as you know, with the 5.5 million square feet, there's a lot of renovation that has to take place on a regular basis, especially since 60% of our schools have been built in the last couple of decades, and just like your homes, things are, you need to be replaced and repaired, and we have that bubble coming through, so it's really gonna be important that we are able to take care of those facilities. Non-instructional is very specific. It's not just administration. People always see that as administration, but ultimately, it could be this facility, it could be our warehouse, our IRC, which is our Instructional Resource Center, it could be the Support Service Facility. So for example, when we need to add a metal shed to keep our equipment out of the sun, that's where that line item would go for, where it says "non-instructional land, new construction improvement." Non-instructional furniture, equipment, and technology would be things like pieces, like when we need to come in here and buy new chairs for something, or if we need to update our offices in any shape or form with furniture, equipment, or technology in the facilities that are not schools. So those are how the five categories are broke out. As you know, we have the area of new construction. Yes, Jason?
Good question. If you could back up the slide.
Sure.
Non-instructional, is that also like transportation and stuff like that?
So transportation, actually, yes, the building would be, absolutely.
Yep.
But the buses are specific.
The buses are specific, but...
Mm-hmm. But yes, transportation, food service, the central kitchen, not the actual cafeteria at the room, but the central kitchen would be in there.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. So new construction, this is related mostly, obviously, to the instructional side. It would be the potential of rebuilding Hartford, adding additional spaces, especially, potentially, some of our CTAs that have smaller campuses. As we go through remodeling, as we're reimagining and repurposing our schools, part of that's the construction process, and then looking at what we're doing with some of our junior highs, either a rebuild potentially of a junior high or reimagining some of our older junior highs, especially north of the 202. We have furniture and equipment. We have it broken down, but again, the purposes for furniture and equipment for instructional and non-instructional. So we added both of these together. That's both at the schools and here at our offices. That's majority of that's technology, and some of that is furniture and equipment related to replacement of physical items, but majority of that is our technology side of those pieces. Elementary, we have a line item where we pull out specifically flooring, roofing renovations in our elementaries. A lot of that is in the renovation line item, and that's important because we never know some of the needs that might come up, and so we have a line item for that. We have a very good schedule of preventative maintenance that Tom and his staff have put together related to roofs and HVAC, carpeting, paint, all of those things, but we also have a line in there for things that come up that we don't know about. That's extremely important. Another line item that we have is in our secondary area, is we have our 7th through 12th have additional things like CTE facilities, and so we have some additional things in there. Again, Tom and his team have done a great job of going through and telling us when all the big-ticket items need to be replaced, but ultimately, we have a line item in there to take care of in the next four to five years, things that we don't know about, that aren't part of preventative maintenance, but maybe are part of modernization or maximizing that potential for the future. Parking lots, as you know, are always an issue, not just to maintain them, because if you lose them, it's extremely expensive to replace them, but also, you don't want to have injuries in your parking lots. Not only do staff use these, students, but parents are on our community, are on our properties, too. So making sure that we're maintaining those, because it's expensive if you have to completely replace them if you let them go, but also for safety reasons, too. Grounds is a big portion. As you know, we have almost 1,000 acres. We have a little over 900 and some acres, and that includes our school sites, our athletic fields, our playgrounds, all of those areas. There's a lot of areas that go around or encompass our campus, so we have shade structures, surface projects, resurfacing projects around. You'll see our interior courtyards. When you go into schools, they're beautiful, but there's a lot of trees, shrubbery, there's sidewalks inside, all of those things. So there's a lot of replacement. Fencing is a constant replacement project because of moisture, water, or just getting older, and so you're replacing or updating your fencing around your campuses. Athletic spaces, there is a chunk of money aside for athletic spaces, a big portion of that for lights, LED. As you know, we're always looking to save in energy related to our utilities, and as you know, those costs are continuing to go up, so a conversion over to LED, but also updating all of our fields, courts, inside and outside, and then looking at turf conversion. We don't have a specific thing saying we're gonna do this field or that field, but looking at those options, again, for saving on water costs and on maintenance side of things, but also to prepare for the future. Community spaces, as you know, we are very fortunate. We have great relationships with the City of Chandler, the Town of Gilbert, and the Town of Queen Creek, and ultimately, we have a number of things that we've shared between pools, our Performing Arts Center, and so we have money set aside for those areas to improve them over the next handful of years. They're expensive. We have a relationship where we cover 50/50 on expenditures on capital items, and so we have the option to keep updating those facilities jointly with the cities. We have some non-instructional construction items that are important. This is where we talked about, they have to be broke out separate than our schools. Our roof will need to be redone. That's part of that preventative maintenance list. You cannot apply to the School Facilities Board for any administrative facilities or non-instructional facilities, and so this is something that we would have to cover. So our district office roof needs to be replaced. We know that we need some additional renovations at our warehouse. We need to build a new metal building at our Support Service Area to get our equipment out of the sun, and then there's, for example, the IRC needs new flooring. So those are items that are non-instructional on the list.
Lana, where would that be?
Yes. What was that?
Metal building?
Say that again.
Is that out by Willis, or is it out?
That one would be at Willis. Yes. So technology, this is our largest area for, especially when you get into the furniture and equipment side of everything. As you know, COVID has propelled us into the instructional era of one-to-ones. We have, as you know, now, we have our interactive flat panels that you approved, and we're so excited about our going really well at our schools, but we also just have a very large infrastructure of Wi-Fi. We also include our security cameras, our audiovisual areas, things like this that are in every single one of our schools and facilities as we present and work with parents to show, not off their kids, but also when they're coming in for theater, things like that. So lots of different things between network and our end-use device, but again, majority of this is just to maintain our infrastructure. Now, remember, we have 43,000 kids, we have 5,000 employees, so we almost have 50,000 people accessing technology across Chandler Unified, and this is to maintain our systems with a small amount to have items for future initiatives and innovation. There is a line for that that's about 10%, but ultimately, the rest is really to just maintain the systems and replacement systems that we have. We've done a really good job over the last year, building our budgets for that, so knowing how much it's gonna cost to maintain the systems. Energy management, we're always looking at this, Tom and his team. We're upgrading our restrooms. We have a lot of lighting projects that will continue to update throughout our schools, including the athletic space that you saw with the LED lights, and then HVAC repairs and renovations. That's your biggest ticket item between lights and HVAC of where you're spending your money and how you can save money on the energy side. Safety, always a concern, air panels, protection upgrades that we have, security cameras, safety measures, all of those. We have money in that arena for safety and to continue that in our district. Transportation, we have a fleet of over 200. We have about half of those fleet are regular education, the other half are special education. This is only for yellow buses. Our white fleet, which is plumbers, plumber vehicles, our computer, our technology staff who use vehicles, our warehouse, that's out of white fleet. We pay for that out of capital, so this is just for our yellow fleet and our buses. We maximize as many miles as we can on each of our buses, but ultimately, we have a cycle to replace buses, just like we do at a school with a replacement cycle for roofs or HVAC, same thing with buses. Food and nutrition, we have some big projects in food and nutrition. We've done a great job of kind of updating our elementaries and some of our high schools, but we know that we need to do some remodels at our junior highs, especially to increase participation. We know that Knox is our worst cafeteria in all of our schools, and it actually needs to be redone. We need to build a new cafeteria there, and we need a new cafeteria probably, or remodel to Chandler High School also. And so those are our two major cafeterias that need big rehauls or potentially additional space for those cafeterias. And then again, there's always renovation and unforeseen things that are happening in our kitchens. Some of them prepared, we've repaired for, some of them we have not yet, that we just don't know about. So it includes all of that. So when you add all those up, the five areas that we talked about were pupil transportation. There is options all the way from 15 million all the way down to option three. You can see it 10 million, so there's options in between. We had presented to our committee three options, options one, option two A, and option three. The Bond Committee came back with option two B, and they'll talk about their recommendation in a minute, but really, the only changes between option two A and two B are related to, a little bit with technology, they shaved off about $2.5 million on technology, and they shaved off $10 million on renovations overall, to drop it from $499,950,000 to $487,450,000. So the adjustment was in renovations and a small amount in technology. So you can see the options are, again, laid out in the five categories: transportation, instructional furniture and equipment, instructional land and new construction improvement, non-instructional furniture and equipment, and then non-instructional land, new construction and improvements. Now, the voter pamphlet will break it out in those five categories if the bond is called, if the board does call for a bond election. There will be, in the frequently asked questions, information that breaks out the categories a little bit more, and there will be question and answers in the voter pamphlet for the voters, but we don't get into the details in the voter pamphlet of every single project or like the Excel spreadsheet that we have that we present. We do go over that in our factual presentations, but ultimately, these are the five categories that the bond will be voted on. All right, one more slide before I hand it over to the Bond Committee Chairs. So this is Stiefel is our financial advisors, and they talk to us about our bond tax rates. We work with them on it. Currently, you just actually approved recently the last sell of our 2019 bond, and so next year's tax rate for our, on our secondary rate related to bonds will be $1.28. And so one thing that we've done is structured, what would that look like for all the different options? So scenario one, that was not quite $600 million, the tax rate would go up a little bit. We would go from $1.28 to, in a sense, $1.32, and then it starts to drop in about three, in the third year after the election, and you can see it as it phases down, and that's because we're paying off other debt during that period of time related to our previous bonds. Option two, which was $499 million approximately, brings the tax rate down to $1.25 compared to $1.28, and at $487,450,000, it's approximately the same thing, $1.25. And then, but the difference between those two, you can start to see, we phase out a little bit quicker, about eight, nine years, you can start to see the little bit of a difference in the tax rate. Overall, on the bottom, you can see it's about a one cent overall difference over a 20-year period of time, 25-year period of time. Scenario three is dropping that down, and as you saw, the fourth option on there for a little over $451 million, and the tax rate would be $1.23. The bond pamphlet will show projected average annual tax rate, and you can see the differences between the four options. But again, what's important, I think, too, is to know that people are paying $1.28, and they'll be approximately paying either $1.32, $1.25, or $1.23.
I have a question about the way it, the way it works, because I don't know. The bonds that we've previously sold, they're getting phased out slowly, correct?
Yes.
So even if we didn't do anything, there would still be bonds that lingered, and those would be sold, right?
Right.
Or those would be paid off, basically, right?
Right.
Okay.
Once we sell those, those are set until they're recalled, until they're eligible to be recalled to the very end. So those amounts are set once we sell those, and the phases that we do, we have three times where we, like, for example, in 2019, we sold. So those, I can't really restructure those unless I recall them at the very end, but ultimately, this would be, this is what we project, if we were then to sell bonds, how we would sell them and structure that sale based on the dollar amount that we have.
I was in the impression you've already sold all the 2019 bonds that have been authorized?
We have.
So they're already all sold, they're out in the market?
Yes.
Now they're gonna mature and be paid off?
Yep. All we're doing is paying them off from this point on.
What is their typical maturities?
They're up to 20 years, but remember, furniture and equipment and technology have to be paid off in five years. So everything, everything that's F and E and technology, five years, everything else is structured over a 20-year period.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
This is probably a silly question, but why not scenario one, two, three, and four? Why A and with B?
So B was, we only had one, two, option one, option two, and option three, but the Bond Committee came up with option two. They liked option two, but they made one adjustment. They wanted to reduce it by $12,500,000 to come down to $487,450,000. So we understood their recommendation, and we are presenting that to you. Now, a couple more things to answer your question, Joel? Okay. The last couple of things, just things to consider over the next month before we call for the, call for the election is, the community has given us input. We did, we did staff surveys last year, we did staff surveys this year. Also, Tom, Colleen, and I have went out to the facilities to talk to each of the principals over the last year and this year, just to get input. They have some great ideas, and we really value their input. We've also taken it out to our subcommittee groups, which were really important. We've taken it out. Frank has invited us to his advisory groups. He has a student advisory group, he has a superintendent's parents advisory group, he has a staff advisory group. We've been communicating in those, so we've gotten some great feedback. Also, our, we know that we need to meet our students and our parents and our community's needs, but we also need to take care of our facilities. We have been in charge of taking care of those facilities, and our community has an expectation that they're safe and that they're a great place to send their students at all times. So we want to make sure. We're never gonna get to a point where we're gonna let a roof go so bad that it's not gonna get replaced, or HVAC. We know when something's about to go down, we want to make sure that that HVAC system is up and running for our students, especially when they come back in July. Tax impacts, our tax implications are really important, and so we considered that when we were doing, when we were looking at that. I think that was a consideration, too. We want to make sure that we stay within similar values, because we know that people budget, and they want to keep their taxes where they're at. It's hard when taxes go up and that they have to pay more, so we're trying to be considerate of that and try to maintain that tax rate. So, and we just want to make sure that we stay competitive and prepared for the future. That's really important. So all, the next couple of things, we just, we have to meet the deadline. We are required to have the deadline to call for the election in June, so we have it on there for June the 12th, and we hope that you consider the Bond Committee's recommendation, and so I'm gonna turn that over to Michelle and John to talk about the Bond Committee. All right. And by the way, these two are wonderful. They're awesome. They have helped us for a number of years since I've been here and before, and they're just great advocates of not only Chandler Unified School District, but the, all of our students and our staff, so we thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Snarducci. Lana captured a lot of what I was gonna talk about, but I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that we did hold three meetings in January 31st, February 7th, and we then concluded our final meeting on April 29th. She talked about the subgroups and the advisory committees. We were presented with the history. We had a nice collection of community members and staff, and a lot of us have been working towards this. We were able to be historians within that group, too, and kind of give some of the background history. Along with the economic outlook of the district, we were able to review the bond options by category in detail. That's where we kind of came up with the two B. It was very important to us that we had a unanimous vote, because historically, with this committee, we've always got, made sure that we had a unanimous vote, and everybody was comfortable with how we were voting. So during the last meeting on April 29th, the committee voted unanimously to approve option two B with that decrease of $12.5 million to technology and elementary secondary renovations, and that's where that label of two B comes from. We discussed the three bond options that were outlined. We discussed the funding needed to continue supporting capital improvements, technology, and buses, and the Bond Committee voted unanimously to recommend option two with the slight change of $12.5 million, making the request 487... okay, the number's right there. It's pretty big, right? Okay. Any questions for John and I? John's seated, but that's okay.
Michelle and John, I want to thank you for your service, for working on the Bond Committee and being the chairpersons for that. It really does impact, I think, the board with your, your recommendations really do impact the board, because you guys are all community members, and you kind of, I'm really happy to see that you wanted a unanimous decision on the amount of the board that was going to be recommended to the board. As I look through the rates myself, I look, one of the things that I don't like to see is the tax rate going up, and I'm really pleased to see that you guys decided that you agree with the community and most of the taxpayers in the community, that we don't want to see the tax rate go up if we have an additional bond that is approved. So thank you very much for that. Mrs. Berry, I want to thank you also for working with Stiefel to make sure that that tax rate doesn't get, doesn't jump up, and that you have a steady sale of the different bonds, so that it does help keep the tax rate more level or going down at all times. So thank you very much for doing that, because I think that is extremely important to our taxpayers in the community. Are there any... Yes. Mr. Worth?
Michelle and John, how long have you sat on committees like this, overrides and bonds? How many years?
I've been doing this work since 2012.
I've been doing it since 2014, I believe.
Well, thank you. That's amazing.
Yes, sir. It's my pleasure, honestly.
My pleasure as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for me? All right.
All right. Thank you. Well, I think we'll move on, and tonight, we have our retirees' reception, and Mrs. Ingersoll is going to be introducing all of our 2024 retirees, but I would like the board to come down to the front, along with Mr. Narducci. We have a little clock for our retirees, and we can be down here and congratulate each one of them.
Thank you, Board President Mazdin. Yes, if Board members and Superintendent Narducci can be here to shake hands with the retirees, and Kimberly will give you the clock. So we will begin once we get situated. Thank you. We will begin with Kimberly Baldanegro Sanders from Frye Elementary, a teacher 23 years with CUSD. And she says, "I was lucky enough to spend my entire career at Frye Elementary School. I have many fond memories of students, families, and my Frye family, past and present. Once a Falcon, always a Falcon. I'm looking forward to spending more time with my grandbabies and family." Next, we have Sheri Bollard, excuse me if I mispronounced that, Sheri Bollard from Hancock Elementary School, Student Services Coordinator, 37 years. Sheri says, "My husband and I have spent the majority of our careers in CUSD. I have worked under the most amazing principals and have been able to work with incredible staff and students. I have been blessed to have a job I love and am proud to work with the highest level of professionals. Now, I will join my husband in retirement. I will continue to be an advocate for education and pro-CUSD to anyone I meet. We truly work in the best district there is. I am forever grateful to have a career that I have loved." Next, we have James Budak from Transportation, bus driver of 10 years. And James says, "I have no specific plans at this point, other than getting more involved in church and with family." Next, we have Kathleen Cameron from Anderson Elementary or Junior High, Anderson, group childcare leader, too, six years with CUSD. She plans on traveling with my husband and fur babies. Next, we have Frank Corales from Santan Elementary. Yay, Frank! Noon aide, five years with CUSD, and he says that kids were great to work with. Yes. Yes. Next, we have Lorine Sierra from Payne Junior High, certified seventh grade teacher, ELA teacher, 30 years with CUSD. Lorine says, "I was fortunate to spend my entire career in Chandler Unified School District and have had the pleasure of meeting wonderful people and seeing the district grow and change over the years. I worked the first 11 as a fourth grade teacher at Anderson Elementary and have so many memories of my time there. I transferred to Weinberg as a sixth grade teacher and due to overcrowding, was able to work at Payne Junior High the year it opened. The rest is history and I chose to stay at Payne and have spent 19 years as a Panther, yep, Panther teaching seventh grade ELA. Memories, relationships, and my students will stay with me long after retirement." Next, we have Anodyne Corman, Augzir and Galveston, third grade teacher, 23 years with CUSD. She says, "Thank you for giving me the opportunity to reflect on my time here at Chandler Unified Schools. Working alongside such dedicated individuals has been a privilege, and I am thankful for the support and friendships that have enriched my career. Knowing that I have played a part, however small, in fostering my students' love for learning fills me with a sense of fulfillment and pride. I couldn't have asked for a more rewarding experience and I will carry these memories with me into retirement." Next, we have Dale Devak, Transportation Bus Driver, eight years. And Dale says, "He enjoyed driving the bus and interacting with the kids. And if anyone wants to drive buses now that Dale is retiring, we are hiring." Thank you, Dale. Next, we have Michelle Foray, Transportation Bus Driver, 18 years. Foray, "I have enjoyed driving a bus for 18 years. I love to do the sports. I plan on doing a little more traveling. I have a place up north in Happy Jack and plan on being up there as much as possible." Next, we have Denise Grossi, Hamilton High School Admin Secretary, 16 years. "My children attended CUSD and I wanted to give back to those who gave them a great experience. I plan to take on the role of grandma." It's a good role. Next, we have Larry Hale from Support Services Painter, 15 years with CUSD. And Larry says, "Lots of good memories and friendships." Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Jacqueline Hartrick, Jackie, Chandler High School. Yay! Math teacher IB Coordinator, 27 years with Chandler Unified School District. Jackie says, "I have spent all my years with CUSD at Chandler High School. The students, staff, and teachers are just amazing. I've enjoyed every year. I especially enjoyed the years that my daughters were at Chandler High. I have so many good memories and will cherish them forever." Thank you. Next, we have Carolyn Hernandez, CTA Independence Kindergarten Teacher. Oh! 18 years with CUSD. "We plan on traveling around the U.S. in our RV." Good plan. Next, we have Lisa Ho, Hamilton High School. Hugh, I'm sorry, Food Nutrition Cafe Associate, 19 years. "I'm looking forward to relaxing and getting a few projects done around the house, also spending more time with my 88-year-old mother." Next, we have Judy King from Castile High School, math teacher. Go math teachers! 19 years. And Judy says, "When I came to CUSD in 2005, I worked at Basha Elementary, teaching fifth and sixth grade. I moved to Castile High School to teach math when it opened in 2015 and have been loving every minute of it. I plan to take a year off or so to do some traveling and I'm hoping to see the Northern Lights and spend some time with family. I will probably work in some capacity after my time off, as I can't see a world without participating in what I love." Next, we have Connie Creel, Chief Hill Mathematics Teacher, seven years in CUSD. But listen to this, 45 years total of teaching. Connie says, "I've thoroughly enjoyed working with our students and staff at our ICAN location. I plan to do some traveling and spend more time with my elderly mother, our children, and our grandchildren." This one touches the heart. Jeff Lebends from Marketing and Communications Webmaster, 26 years with CUSD. Jeff says, "Frank Narducci hired me away from teaching kindergarten in Glendale Elementary to become a media specialist at Conley and Jacobson in 1998. Since then, my two kids have grown up through wonderful CUSD schools with some outstanding teachers and on to great careers. I've worked as an Instructional Technology Specialist, Assistant Director for Instructional Technology, and later Community Relations, and most recently as the District Webmaster. My lovely wife Gina and I plan to enjoy retirement by traveling the country in a van RV named Grace with their anchor moments, meeting people and sharing their stories on our YouTube channel of moments that have anchored their faith. At the end of June, we also plan to enjoy being grandparents for the first time." Next, we have Steve McLelland from COA Elementary, and we have sixth grade teacher, about seven years with CUSD. Steve says, "I was first and foremost a student in CUSD from eighth and ninth grade at Chandler Junior High to Chandler High School, graduating in 1984. After four years in the military as a firefighter and about eight years in the radio biz, I felt a calling to teach. I completed my student teaching experience at Weinberg Elementary back in 1997. I would graduate during the winter of 97 and finish off the school year under Frank Narducci at Conley Elementary. I would come back to CUSD in 2018 to finish my career in teaching, thanks to Dr. Joe Walters, ironically, the principal at Conley Elementary." Well, he's now at Hancock. "I am finishing this rewarding venture at COA Elementary on a very high note. CUSD has been very good to me from my student years on through my teaching career." We have Karen McCarthy, Chandler Online Academy Counselor, 21 years with CUSD. I will be, Karen says, "I will be joining my family on the East Coast." Next, give it a second. Next, we have Kathleen Mejia, Santan Junior High School. And Kathleen is a fax teacher, 22 years with CUSD. "I've enjoyed working with the staff and students at Santan Junior High. Every day was an adventure. You don't know what the day would bring, and there was many pleasant surprises." So this one also touches the heart a little. Videll Mejia from Chandler High School, CTE Teacher, Film and TV, and the Wrestling Coach, 26 years. "I fell in love with Chandler High School from the start and I will miss working with my kids. I am also very proud of my wrestling program, and he is a nationally recognized wrestling coach and a Marine. Once a Marine, always a Marine." Juliana Parks from Santan Elementary, Paratou, six years. "I've enjoyed my time at a wonderful school and I'm looking forward to traveling and visiting my girls." Next, we have Michael Self, Support Services Assistant Director. 12 years with CUSD. Play, he's in retirement. He's going to play music and work at his construction business. Next, we have Shelley Smith, Perry High School, Special Education Teacher, 17 years. Shelley says, "I began my employment with CUSD in 2007 when Perry High School opened and Dan Serrano graciously hired me. All three of my children attended CUSD schools from kindergarten through high school graduation. I've had the pleasure to work with the best people during my time at CUSD. I started in the classroom with the students, became the Special Education Department Chair for eight years, then returned to the classroom. I have made the decision to retire at this time as in my life. I just need to be more available to take care of my family." Next, we have Veronica Tess from Chandler High School, Social Studies Teacher, 32 years with CUSD. Veronica says, "I have loved working for CUSD. My mother taught for Chandler Unified, and I have two brothers who currently work for Chandler Unified. I graduated from CHS in 1976, and my mother graduated from CHS in 1952. For retirement, I plan to travel and spend time in Pine Top, Arizona." Next, we have Christine Tyron Rice, Riggs Elementary, fourth grade teacher, 12 years with CUSD. And Christine says, "In retirement, she's going to travel, spend time with grandchildren." Next. Next, we have Patricia Turner, Sanborn Elementary, Site Lead, Kids Express, 22 years with CUSD. And this is great advice for all of us. She is going to take some time to relax. And then we have Heidi Wyand from Riggs Elementary, Elementary Teacher, third grade currently, 29 years with CUSD. Heidi says she taught second, third, fourth, and fifth grades for the past 28 years at San Marcos, Conley, and Riggs Elementary. Prior to my hire, I did four long-term substitute positions. First grade at Sanborn, third grade at San Marcos, seventh grade math at Bogle, and ninth grade PE dance at Bogle Junior High, and taught during intercessions. During COVID, my fifth grade class and I were observed by A-plus judge on Google Meet to earn Riggs' second A-plus school recognition." She says that she has truly loved being a teacher and her experience at CUSD. Is Julie Varland here? Or, we have one more. Last name. Standby. Want to make sure we have everyone. Charles Lancy? Nope, that is everyone. Congratulations to our retirees!
I wanted to thank all of our retirees for all of the things that you've done for our students over the years. We truly appreciate it.